Good morning. It is 8:30. I'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item would be looking for an approval of the agenda. A motion by Commissioner Gross to approve, a second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried, thank you. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens wishing to address the board on any items that are not on the agenda this morning? Any citizens? There's also an opportunity to comment online. Steve, have we received any?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Presented in the packet are the minutes from the December 21 Commission meeting.
Move to approve minutes?
We have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve, and a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The bills and vouchers that were sent out to you yesterday?
I would move to approve bills and vouchers.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve the bills, a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. This is an opportunity for us to recognize a donation to our Sheriff's K-9 program from the Hitterdale Area Alliance Club. We're grateful for the support that we receive from community members and organizations on different programming, and this is a valuable donation, so thank you very much for that. Item two, our COVID-19 update. Public Health Director Kathy McKay in staff. Morning. Kathy, I think your mic is still off.
Mic's off. Sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll go through our active cases this week, so as you can see, did everybody get the handouts?
I don't know if Commissioner Campbell has one.
Yeah, I got Steve's. And good now.
We're good.
Okay, sorry about that. And then, okay, sorry about the delay here. Active cases in Clay County, as you can see, they jumped up this week, January 10th, so they are 737 active cases, so we really jumped up from last week, in which they were 364. They also, in Minnesota, have increased with this Omicron variant kind of really, you know, spreading quite rapidly. January 3rd, it was 33,147, and now we're seeing 46,809. You see also in Cass County, the numbers went really significantly higher than last week, so 474 last week, and they're up to 1,000, 172 in Cass County. And you look at North Dakota, 1629 throughout the whole state was in January 3rd, and now 3,860 across the state of North Dakota. So you can see that Cass is really kind of a hotspot for the numbers of active cases that we're seeing an increase. So active cases by age group, so we're still seeing the 20 to 24 age group being the highest number, and then the 25 to 29, and the 30 to 34, so those are the numbers of cases. The Clay County cases per week, starting in August, so we're seeing the preliminary number, again in the gray column on the edge, it's, we're still reporting just the cases as we have them right now, the 464, and again, that increases as the numbers catch up. So this has been the highest number we've seen since November of 2020, so you can see it's really spiking up. Here's our Clay County cases per week, starting back in March of 2020, so you can see the waves, and we're seeing again now the beginning of another increase that they are predicting, so some of them are saying it's like a tsunami coming in, so we're seeing really that number jump way up again. Cases have not been this high again since the fall of our 2020 surge. And then our cumulative cases by age, so our total cases, 13,931, and again, the cumulative age group that's been the highest is the 20 to 24, and then we're seeing the 30 to 34, so that's been consistent.
Becky?
Good morning. So this is just the updated CDC graph on community level of transmission. Clay County continues to be at that high level, as well as the rest of Minnesota for this week, or for this past week. This graph shows Clay County deaths reported per week, so we did see one additional death reported since last board meeting, so our total deaths throughout the pandemic is at This is the hospital admissions for Clay County residents, so for last week, we've had seven reported admissions throughout Clay County. And just a reminder when looking at this graph, these are new admissions per week, so some of them may, this doesn't necessarily say that there's only seven Clay County residents in the hospital right now, it's just there were seven new admissions, so some of these patients are in the hospital for weeks at a time. And then this is the hospital capacity information for our local healthcare systems, so you can see that having available staffed beds continues to be a concern. So at the time of this report, there was a total of six staffed adult ICU beds in Fargo and two pediatric ICU beds. So statewide totals, there were 18 available ICU beds, and then the only pediatric ICU beds were the two in Fargo. And this is COVID hospitalizations in North Dakota, so a total of 122 are currently hospitalized due to COVID with 21 in the ICU. The middle graph is current hospitalized due to COVID by age, so we do have a few pediatric patients that are hospitalized, and then the graph on the right is cumulative numbers broken down by age. This is our updated graphic from the Sanford healthcare system as of January 4th, so we continue to see the same trend week after week. The majority of hospitalized COVID patients are not vaccinated, so for this week, 46 of the 51 patients on ventilators due to COVID are not vaccinated. This is the vaccine breakthrough data that we get from the State Health Department, so on the left side is, was our cumulative percentages from last week, on the right side is our cumulative percentages for this week, so the most updated numbers that we have. Breakthrough cases are at 4.85%, so we are seeing an increase in those, you know, as anticipated. Breakthrough hospitalizations at 0.172% and breakthrough deaths at 0.035%, so continuing to see very, very strong protection against severe illness with these vaccines. Jamie will talk about the vaccine data.
Good morning. Okay, looking at our statewide vaccine data, again, as of 1/6/2022, for those five and over, we have, Minnesota has 68% of the population eligible for the vaccine that has completed the series, and then 72% have received just one of the vaccines. And then you have the breakdown as well of, by the age groups, so seeing an increase in the 5 to 11 at 33% for the first dose, and 25% for the second. And then, on the other end of that, our 65 and over, we have 97% that have had one vaccine, and then 93% that have completed the series, so making progress overall, and then you can see the booster as well, so. And then I'll flip to Clay County. We did see an increase in the number of people that we served this week, so we had our clinic last week, we just had one, and we had 118 people served for a total of 18,792 vaccines provided by Clay County Public Health alone. And then, the next slide is the breakdown of what we actually administered, and we had 118 doses, as I mentioned, first doses, six of those, second doses, eight, third dose or the booster continues to be the primary focus of our clinics at 87%. And then pediatric, the 5 to 11, we have first doses, five, and then second doses, 12. And then we added on the slide, the clinics that we are having this week, so it is just, we have Tuesday today at the MSUM Comstock Union for 12 and over, so it is at the union, but it is open for people to register there. We have a 10 to 1:00 p.m. clinic for them, Pfizer first and second doses for 12 and up, we have the Pfizer booster doses for 16 and over, Moderna first and second doses and booster doses for those 18 and over. And then we also have a clinic at the Family Service Center on Thursday, the 13th, in the ITV room again, and we split that, like we did last weekend, into the two clinics, so we've got a 10 to 2, and then all the doses that I mentioned earlier are available there, the Pfizer, Moderna, and then we have a 3 to 5 clinic for those 5 and over, first doses, second doses, and then also opening that up for the 12 and over and the boosters as well. So that's our plan for this week.
So, Madam Chair, as we, as we see the numbers rise, we, we really want to encourage the, you know, the citizens to, to wear masks in indoor spaces, that's pretty important, the cloth masks, surgical masks are still recommended, and then, you know, they mentioned the N95 or KN95, we're not, that's not a requirement, it's just, especially for people with immunocompromised conditions or health conditions, that might be a good option, it's, just needs to be a really well-fitted mask, so that continues to be our recommendation.
Thank you. Follow-up on that comment, before, there was some issues in terms of shortages for those N95 masks, specifically because those in the trades industry really needed that, so are we not seeing shortage in that availability for folks that need that?
I will just say that we have not directly heard from healthcare providers, but the KN95s, there are stockpiles of KN95s that were ordered, which are not used by the healthcare professionals, the N95s are what they have to, according to the OSHA requirements, be fitted for.
Gotcha, thank you. All right, board questions? Kathy, if we can go back a little bit, maybe to the North Dakota hospitalization data, you know, typically what I think part of the conversations that we're all in weekly to make sure that we're helping to mitigate in, in the best way possible, and I know that school boards are grappling with decisions on what to do, and I know that we are seeing huge increases, but I think for me to look at the North Dakota hospitalization data and only see three from 19 and under that are currently hospitalized, and I, and I get there's still three, but I, I think that is maybe a promising sign of what this, this variant, the severity of it, in terms of our younger populations, since a lot of that number can still not get vaccinated, correct? Is that what I'm?
I would just add that the North Dakota hospitalization data is for North Dakota residents only.
Agreed.
So in Fargo, our healthcare systems, they serve Minnesota, North Dakota, and South Dakota residents, so we're working on trying to be able to get a more complete picture, you know, of the hospitalization, so just take that, you know, into account.
Well, and I appreciate the clarification, I, I know that, and I know that looking at that data has been tricky for us, because we are a border city, so it's difficult for us to really get the whole picture, but I think, I'm looking at, because that is North Dakota only, and I understand we serve Minnesota, but I think it's, it's helpful to get a understanding of what we're seeing in terms of hospitalization rates for our younger citizens.
And then just another clarification too, if you don't mind, so with the Omicron variant, it's just now recently become the predominant strain, and usually hospitalizations, there's, we, you know, consider them a lagging indicator, so it would be probably three to four weeks before we would start to see
Right.
... an increase in hospitalizations if we are going to, so.
Commissioner Kaylee.
So I know we just got rid of our campus-wide mask mandate for public spaces where we couldn't maintain social distance, but given this information, I wanted to bring it up again and see how you're feeling about that today, given these numbers. I went through, as you were talking, and everything has doubled, pretty much, from last week's numbers that were reported, and it looks like we're heading towards, like you said, a tsunami, a giant spike, so is this something that we need to think about doing again? I would like to hear your opinion.
You know, we've, we've had discussions about that. Part of the issue is our community is not, you know, doing the mask mandates, that's where we're seeing really the biggest transmission. I know that Fargo City Council discussed this last night, and because of the inability to kind of have people comply with that, I know that they had voted that down, so in the metro area, even with their high numbers, they felt like it had to be citywide, and that's, that's a tough thing to require, although, you know, a public health standard would be, we should kind of mask up again in those public spaces, but that's a, that's a bigger ask, to ask all of the businesses and facilities to, you know, to implement masking again. I know many of them are doing employee masking, but as you go out into the gatherings, you're seeing a lot, you know, and I'm not seeing big massive amounts of people masking, so that's the challenge, is the, is the spread out in the community more than we're seeing in our, in our government centers, but, you know, it's a tough call, I just have to say, this board can make a decision about that, but, you know, masking is certainly strongly recommended, and for those that aren't vaccinated, we have on our, on our signs that it, you know, they need to mask. Those that aren't vaccinated are really at high risk for severe illness and disease and death, so we really want the unvaccinated to, you know, take this very seriously. You need to mask up. We also want to push that we need to get the boosters out. That booster will really boost up the immunity from your primary series, especially if it's been a long time. Those are very, very important measures with this Omicron, so I'll ask Becky if she wants to add anything about that.
I would just add that I think the next few weeks are going to be a very big challenge, and I think as public health, you know, we would promote a layered approach, certainly getting your vaccines, practicing social distancing where you can, wearing a mask when you're in enclosed spaces with a lot of people, that would be our recommendation.
Want to talk a little bit about the vault site?
Yes, thank you. So our testing site, the vault site in Clay County, as of December 26, tested a total of 1,806 people, and you'll see the positivity rate of 13.9, or 2.9. And also wanted to note that we, Kathy and I, were working with testing yesterday, and we are hearing delays, we're hearing that they're pretty overwhelmed. We also had a request from the North Dakota side to, to slow down on Minnesota side, people coming over, because they are so heavily being impacted because of our days, the, that our vault is not open. So I want to reach out and also encourage people to order a test kit from the Minnesota Department of Health. It is also a link on our website. If you are staying home because you are having symptoms, you can order that test, and there's a, a pretty quick turnaround time to get that, so for those that have symptoms, please take advantage of that off the Minnesota Department of Health website for testing.
And Madam Chair, just a quick note, I did reach out to the Minnesota Department of Health to see if they could increase the days and the times for the vault testing site, because they're closed two days, Friday and Saturday, and then they, they don't open right away, so we made that request because of the enormous number of people going in and getting tested. We've heard that people were turned away because they were so overwhelmed this weekend and, and yesterday. The answer to that was just not at this time, they're, they're going to expand. I don't know if that was because of numbers of people that they can't find to work there, but we're going to continue to push, because as Jamie mentioned, the North Dakota testing site is reaching us, out to us, because they're just seeing way too many Minnesota people, and they're overwhelmed, they don't have enough manpower as well, they're very strapped. They're open Monday through Fridays, but they really want to focus on their North Dakota residents, and so we both were, both testing sites were offering to both Minnesota and North Dakota, but now, since Fargo is seeing more Minnesota people heading over there, it's, it's difficult with the testing, so as Jamie said, we really want to encourage them to use the vault testing site and the at-home tests, because vault is not open every day of the week.
And I appreciate you reaching out, that was something, as we all saw, Governor Walz was trying to expand opportunities for those testing sites, and having limited hours, I think, is cumbersome, specifically the 11 o'clock is, is kind of awkward, I think, because as businesses, larger businesses are trying to move forward with what the OSHA mandate is, having an availability for a testing at an early time, I think, would be helpful. I also heard last week that there was shortages on the rapid test, it was moved to saliva only, had you heard that as well?
No, I did not, did you?
Not at the vault. I had some folks that had reached out to me Thursday, Friday, that were trying to test before they left for the weekend, and there were not rapid tests available at that site. Just maybe to update our public health page online, I know it does say open to North Dakota and Minnesota, so let's make sure we're updating that as needed as well. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you for pushing for more hours if possible for that vault site, because yes, there was an explosion of public comment on people just being really frustrated that they couldn't get in without an appointment and being turned away, and I hope that you will continue to advocate for us in that, I know you will. I can't, I can't in good conscience not propose we reinstate a mask mandate in our county-owned This is the highest numbers that we've seen since November of 2020, and so I'm going to make a motion that masks be required in county-owned buildings in public spaces where social distancing cannot be maintained, so that's not somebody's individual office, the jails following their own policies, same as it, as it was previously.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Kaylee. Is there a second?
Second.
It was a second by Commissioner Ebbinger, board discussion. Commissioner Ebbinger.
I, I think this is something we need to discuss at this point, I don't know, you know, my primary concern, I think, is addressed with the OSHA proposal, that we keep our employees safe and keep it from being a contagion within our employee groups, but I think we do need to discuss this, given these really concerning numbers, I mean, it's doubled in a week, and I, I hope we don't become complacent, or we just have, have some kind of fatigue, where you go, well, it's Omicron, it's not as, as virulent, and, or it's not as deadly, and we at least discuss this and, and try and determine what course faction we want to take.
Kathy, in terms of the tsunami, as we're preparing for, what are the discussions you're hearing about creating a field hospital in terms of a location, a secondary location, similar to what we did at the Fargo Dome to deal with the massive increases that we were anticipating at that point?
No, we haven't heard anything at, at this time. We do have a meeting this afternoon with the State Health Department, so we may hear more information, and then we've reached out to the Sanford and Essentia, but we need to get some information back from them, so, haven't heard locally.
Maybe just to clarify for the public what that OSHA mandate is, we are working feverishly, I think, to put it lightly, to create a policy on what our compliance with that regulation will be. Currently, as it stands, we've asked for the vaccination status of all of our employees, effective, I think, yesterday or today, to have all of that. Folks that do not wish to do that or take part in that will be required to test weekly. Those folks will also be required, regardless of spacing or office space, to wear masks, and so at this point, I don't have the, the accurate number from what the response was, but we're seeing over a majority of staff have been vaccinated, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, of those that have, have responded, yes, a significant portion, I believe Darren may have the most updated information here shortly.
And so we are communicating with those other staff to make sure that we're working with them to make sure that, that the requirement, but also what comes with that is the keeping people safe piece, will be followed as well. You know, I've, I've been, I've been critical of us not having a policy in place for, and I think because of the ebbs and flows of what this is, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but I think it's hard, as this, as a member of this board, to not have a policy in place on what, what is the staff percentage infection rate? What is, are we seeing that, that people, citizens are coming here and getting it from here, or are we tracking it from where? Without a policy in place, it's difficult for us to not make week-to-week decisions, and, and, you know, and that's just part, part of the territory that comes with it, but I think that what our plans with the OSHA mandate really will help and create a policy. It really will give us a document in which to, to follow, in terms of what our requirements are for staff. Commissioner Kaylee.
To me, it's not just about our staff masking, it's heavily about the public masking when they come into our buildings for meetings, for appointments. I do not want members of the public unknowingly carrying COVID to our staff or to other members of the public who are here as well. And what we know from some of the tests on masks, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but the, the viral load that you are shedding is what's being stopped by the mask, more so than someone taking in a virus from, you know, it's not, it's not stopping as much this way, it's stopping more this way. Is that correct, Becky?
Yes, I would agree with that. So I think it's heavily about members of the public wearing masks when they come into our spaces, as much as it is about staff wearing masks in those public spaces as well.
Darren, Darren does have the...
Yes, Darren. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just looked at the numbers, and it looks like out of about 617 people, we've had 527 that have submitted to form on their vaccination status. We have 448 which are fully vaccinated, 70 that are not vaccinated, and nine that are partially vaccinated. So if you look at the numbers, there's about 85% that have been fully vaccinated within the county that have responded to the request.
Thank you for grabbing that, Darren. Board comments? Commissioner Campbell.
Kathy, most of our departments within Clay County, that the public comes in, don't we, aren't we, don't we, aren't we currently asking them, the public, to be masked when they come in?
You know, Clay County Public Health is, if we are doing any face-to-face You know, Clay County Public Health is, if we are doing any face-to-face meetings. So many, WIC, for instance, is still under a federal guidance of not seeing their clients face-to-face. So the majority of their clients are being seen and served over the phone. They're still keeping that in place for a few months yet. So we're not seeing, you know, the numbers coming through WIC, obviously. The numbers in our public health clinic are also minimal, but everybody is masking when they come in, public families and the nurses. When we do our vaccination, clinics, everyone's masked. And, you know, if we get into the testing, everyone will be masked. We also are requiring our home visiting nurses or anyone that's going out into the home, which isn't our recommendation. It's just for some of the ones that are really essentially that we have to see in the home, everyone is masked. So in all of our program areas, we're doing the masking.
So the other areas where there might be a comment with public to county employees and social services, you're not aware of what they may or may not be doing then?
Yeah. Commissioner Campbell, Madam Chair, the social services are also following the masking. We've talked with the supervisor and the department head, and they are masking when they're doing face-to-face visits. For those that can mask, you know, obviously some of the kids can't be masked yet, but they are masking when they're in, meeting with the public in...
It seems to me, from what I've heard, is that when folks make appointments to go to the family service center to, for whatever business that they're doing, that during those conversations, they're asked to wear masks, especially if they haven't been vaccinated. Whether or not it's a policy, I think it's something that's been going on. And if I can shift to the government center, have you been into the new government center, into the lobby area there?
Yes, it's been a little while, but I've been there.
And would you say that with the work that we did and the design for that, that that is, from a public standpoint, coming in there, that our employees would be fairly protected based on the measures that we've taken?
Yes, if I can recall, there's the plexiglass in some of those areas that are...
I think there's plexiglass in all the areas.
It's probably in all, okay. I'm trying to recall. It's been a while since I try to avoid going over there because my boss is there, but, no, just kidding. But yeah, I think you're right. I think if they go into office spaces, maybe that's the area, if you have anyone in office spaces there. Citizens?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the government center was specifically set up to have social distancing between all of the different units. We do have, we have actual glass in the waiting rooms for our customers with chairs that are set up six feet apart to show that ability. And so from a standpoint of, not that we don't see some higher usage numbers sometimes, but it's very rare that we have more than a handful of people that are in the government center lobby area. And also, the windows are set up to be six feet apart from each other, and so they should be able to maintain that separation.
Would you say the same is with DMV, too?
Yes, the DMV was set up in a similar fashion with the windows are seven and a half feet apart, and we have seating for just about 25 people in that area with separation.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the board? Questions? Commissioner Ebbinger.
And I'll address this to Steve. Is, and it's putting you in an uncomfortable position, but if we pass a mask mandate, is it more of an enforcement issue? Is it a difficult thing? Do you think the supervisors would be able to enforce it? Or is this just putting lipstick on a pig and giving them one more thing they've got to touch base? We've done a lot of things that I think are effective. I'm just wondering if this is something that would be useful or just another base they've got to touch.
I think maybe one of the, maybe the easiest way I can answer it is when this board decided to take the mask mandate off, I received little to no response from our employees requesting that we maintain a mask. You know, I think the enforcement piece of a mask-wearing, I think, has been a challenge throughout this. I think that, you know, the upcoming policy and OSHA policy will probably end up putting some teeth into that. But right now, in all honesty, we don't really have anything that would require or make the responsible to our employees to do that, so.
That answered my question. Thanks.
I know we need to move on. We have a couple of public bid openings, but I think it's, from my perspective, for me to look at data weekly and see the data breakdown on vaccinated versus unvaccinated, I think speaks loudest to me personally. And so I think my personal energy is going to be to encourage our vaccine clinics, our public health workers, to continue to spread that message. I don't want it to get overshadowed by if a person received a mask or got a mask or not had a mask. I think it's really important that we help the public know that there are vaccine clinic opportunities, there's availability for testing. And I think that in a time when you've done so much, you have done so much to educate the public, there comes a time when you need to realize where is our effort best. And for me as a Commissioner, it was making sure that we had barriers in place to keep our staff as safe as possible, to have plexiglass, to have offices where people aren't sharing closets, to have space for the public to distance if they need to. We also have the ability for folks to get almost everything online. Almost all of our departments are offering that online. And so that's where I stand. Any other comments? Commissioner Kaylee.
Final question for me. I'm wondering about the use of the meeting rooms in the family service center. How frequently are those used? What, how many people are using those rooms at the same time? I know I've, I'm sure we've all been in meetings in room four when there's been, you know, standing room only, or, you know, we're packed to the gills in there. But, and sometimes there's six people in there. So I'm just wondering what the public meeting spaces situation is like currently.
You know, I can't answer that. Joe, I don't know if you can.
Yeah, the rooms do get used daily and booked daily, so they're being used a lot. So I don't think there's any kind of barriers. But we do have those plexiglass things you can grab and put in front if we need to. So there are those available, family service center, but that's what I know anyways.
All of the, Madam Chair, all of the meetings that public health has are all remote still. We don't, we rarely do face-to-face, except if it's a small group and we're able to distance. So I'm not sure what others are using the rooms in the family service center building.
I think maybe if there is concerns from folks that are reserving that, Joe, make sure. And we did purchase with CARES Act dollars a cart to allow those meetings to happen remotely. And we did purchase a substantial amount of laptops so that employees can call in and participate remotely as well. That's a question. Follow-up? Okay, Colleen, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Nay.
Commissioner Campbell.
Nay.
Commissioner Mojo.
Nay.
Commissioner Gross.
Nay.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Yes. The motion fails. Thank you so much for your work. We really appreciate it. Looking at the clock, I'm going to have to shuffle us a little bit because of electronic needs for our bid openings. So if the board doesn't mind, we'll move to item number six, would be a request from our facilities director, Joe Olson, for the bid opening for the power plant generator project. Good morning, Joe. Sorry for the delay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. I do have Brian Friedrich with me here, my operations supervisor, to help me with this. Just to clarify, too, we, this was advertised, and we do not have any electrical, electronic bids at this time. So just to clarify that...
I know the next one does, sorry.
Yeah.
Highway.
So this is just a quick overview on this. This is a, this is a bid for the power plant backup generator that serves the family service center and all the HVAC and heating and cooling for the jail, the power plant, and the family service center, and the juvenile center. So it is a pretty important backup power piece. For each of these contractors to be considered, we've requested that they have a licensed copy, an insurance certification of insurance contractor, liability insurance, and then a 10% bid bond. So that's something that we'll be checking first before we open. Also, just to be clear with some owner coordination items, we're going to be opening bids for the generator itself and the transfer switch altogether as one package. We do have some roofing and a door replacement of this project that the engineer's calling for. This is such a large, massive, old generator that we have to completely rip out the door and stuff. So there's a little bit of cost there that will be added to this next week as well, but smaller costs compared to what the project is. Okay, so we will take the first, okay, first bid is from Berkstrom Electric.
Estimate, just for the board, is $275,000?
Correct. Yep. That's an engineer's estimate that he had provided for us. Okay, so it looks like they do have, Berkstrom's has a, they're, it's like they have all their necessary paperwork here for the bond and insurance and license. I'll be smooth at this with the last one, I bet. Okay, Berkstrom has come in at $409,986.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Magnum Electric.
And insurance?
I'm going to check. I don't see that with this, but we'll check in here and see what they got. You see it there? Looks like it's a straight bid bond. Looks like they do have their licensing and insurance. So they're good to go.
All right.
Okay. They have come in at $394,860. It's Magnum Electric. The next bid here is Rick's Electric, and the final bid.
Okay.
Okay, looks like they have all three items to be considered. And they have come in at $345,000. Even. That's Rick's Electric.
Joe, on your memo agenda sheet, you have that there's no motion to be needed today, but you're planning on looking over the bids, making sure they're complete, coming forward with a recommendation, a possible awarding project on January 18th, correct?
Yep, correct. Yep, we will go over everything. I want to check in with our engineer to go over everything, and we'll be back. And then we will add the final cost. There is about $20,000 between ripping out and installing a new door and then some roof work. And what am I missing between that?
Possible flooring.
Some of the flooring. Ah, the flooring's in the bid, so. But I will have all that numbers to you, so we, I will probably send a email out to the building committee as well to take a look at this.
Commissioner Campbell has a comment.
A question for you, Joe. The, when we first started talking about this and when we came up with an estimated cost, how long ago was that? And how much, I see that these are significantly over our estimate.
Yep.
And is it, again, is it a supply and demand issue right now, or?
Yeah, I think...
I mean, it's significantly over.
Yeah, I think it's, I think in the last six months, we've seen a significant jump. When we did, well, we hired the engineer originally with this capital improvement bond to do an assessment on this one as well, and that was his. And that was, that was, well, more than six months ago now, too. So, yeah, I think we're seeing an increase here, and we should probably, goal is to get something ordered and locked in if we do it so.
Even the lowest of them is still 25% over.
Exactly. Yep, yep. So I'll talk with the engineer and see exactly what that is, so.
Thank you.
Joe, can we move on to your next item, please?
Yep, we sure can. All right, so just a, this is just a request. This is an item within the capital improvement project bond. We basically, this is to replace the fire protection panel in the courthouse. We have a quote to, two different quotes here. We are requesting to move forward with this project using the low quote Johnson Controls. Just a note in there, there's a significant difference between these two. Brian and I, we've done a walkthrough with both contractors. We've double-checked and triple-checked to make sure that both of them had the apples to apple. So we are proposing to move forward with the low quote on this one as, in the amount of $22,850. Just good news on this one. We had a budgeted amount of $57,000 in the bond for this, so that this came in significantly lower. So we're asking to move forward with this project.
Thank you. There is a recommendation. Are there any comments from the board? Move to approve this request? A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve the recommendation.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Be back next week.
Thank you. We'll move to item number seven, please, is, would be a request from the highway department. We do have a bid opening scheduled for 9/10, so I apologize for our delay.
No problem at all. Madam Chair, like you had mentioned, we do have our bid opening today, as well as a couple of other final contract vouchers for approval. Our first item today is bid opening for the grading on County Road 1. Been working on this one for a long time. If you all remember, we acquired the right-of-way here not too many weeks ago.
That's right.
We do have a, we have a list of plan holders. Doesn't necessarily mean they're all bidders, but anyone that takes a plan holder, we get a list of that, so we'll hand that out. And then in there, you can write down the numbers as you, as we read them. County Road 1 is a two-mile grading project in Oakport Township. We are planning on re-grading and widening the road. The existing asphalt is in pretty bad shape, and like you mentioned, it's real narrow. So we're gonna, we're gonna widen it out to our, just the minimum standard... it out to our, just the minimum standards, I think it's gonna be 12-foot lane and four-foot shoulders, as well as replacing any culverts and improving some of the drainage. It's real flat up there, but we are gonna improve drainage as best we can. We're gonna leave it gravel this current, over the current winter, and then we're gonna plan for asphalt paving in 2023, so. Justin has all the bids, we did not get any paper copies, so it's nice, we still reserve the right to do paper copies and electronic, and we're starting to see the movement to all electronic. There's literally almost no way for errors, like we're doing math, and when you write it down on a paper copy and then tally it up, we used to see little errors here and there, but there's almost no, no room for errors. At nine o'clock, we get a special key that we can open these things and see them, so there's no way that we've seen any numbers prior to nine o'clock, and I'll just have Justin kind of go through, I think we ended up with eight bidders, so it was nice to see some good interest up there.
Yeah, so first of all, the engineer's estimate for this project is $1,312,139.75. And then I'll start reading the bids. The first bid is Central Specialties Incorporated out of Alexandria, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, and their bid is $1,445,985.70. The next bid is Celine Brothers out of Holly, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, and their bid is $1,446,488.00.
And maybe I want to just make one note, too, there was no addendums on this one, so we didn't need to acknowledge any addendums.
And then the next bid is Riley Brothers Construction out of Morris, Minnesota, they have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, and their bid is $1,518,626.70. The next bid is Haug of Detroit Lakes, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, their bid is $1,646,377.85. The next bid is Midwest Contracting LLC, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, their bid is $1,309,428.00. $1,309, or $309,428.00.
And for some reason, they're not listed on our, they weren't a plan holder, they, they can get their bids from one of the other, there's a Dodge Reports, I'm not exactly sure how they got the, they didn't, they're not listed.
They don't have to be a plan holder to bid.
What's their name?
Midwest Contracting LLC.
They're the company that graded County Road 18 from the American Crystal over to County Road 11 a few years ago.
The next bid is RJ Zaveral and Sons of East Grand Forks, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, their bid is $1,284,918.15. Next bid is Gladen Construction Incorporated, their bid is $1,251,067.85.
Did they have the bid bond?
Yes, they did have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And then the final bid is Dennis Drew's of Frezey, they do have a bid bond in the amount of 5%, and their bid is $1,143,991.85.
The one thing that's really nice with electronic bids, too, is if the bid is incomplete, like they do not have that bid bond or acknowledge addendums, we don't get the numbers.
It won't even show us a number.
It's an incomplete bid, so it is kind of nice, but, based on the numbers here, we're a few hundred thousand dollars under estimate, which we really hope, you know, we, we do bid contingencies in there, so it's nice to see. Maybe we could do a contingent bid based on no errors on this one, we'll take it back. If there is any errors, we'll bring it back immediately next week, but maybe a contingent approval on this one. We've done work with Dennis Drew's, they graded County Road 9 a few years back, they did a good job, they did some pipes for us.
They did three box culverts in 2020 for us.
Okay. Alright, well, it's good to see some bids come in lower, as always, so you, the board, you did hear the recommendation from the engineer?
I would move approval of the low bid of Dennis Drew's with the condition of no errors.
Second. There's a commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the recommendation of awarding the bid based on no errors to Dennis Drew's, a second to Commissioner Kaylee, further All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. The next item would be the approval of the final contract voucher for Central Specialties for the project listed.
Right, so this is for our, an overlay on County Road 6, I'll let Justin run through that a little bit. Project turned out fantastic, this is out in the gravel pit area south of Rolug.
Yeah, so this was a project in the summer of 2021, Central Specialties did the project, it was done in August, turned out really well, it was done really quick, and it came in a little bit under budget, so the final amount that we're looking to get approved would be $407,176.58. And the project number for this project is SAP 014-606-009.
Move approval of the final.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the final, and a second by Commissioner Gross, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item would be the approval of the final contract voucher for the Gladen Construction project.
Right, this is a, it was one contract that we did lump, six separate projects under, this was the federal aid, they call it the Bros dollars, so rather than using bridge bonding dollars, we were able to get federal aid bridge dollars on these ones. There is five different projects on here, or six, I'm sorry, they're, they're all on either county roads or county state aid roads, I guess five of the six are on county roads and then one is on state aid. If we could get an approval on each one separately, maybe that would be more clear for the accounting on it. It was about 3% overbid on the entire works, I think the initial bid for all six was like $875,624, and it come in at $905,780, and the increase is due to a little additional granular borrow when we're putting these things back together. Like you said, it was about 3% over, which wasn't a big, a big amount. Most of that would come from county funds as well as a little bit of the additional.
Bridge bonding and state aid.
Little, bridge bonding and state aid, so, projects turned out really good, it was nice to get these things replaced and get six under one contract.
Thank you, Dave, to clarify, you want six separate motions, correct?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of SP and then the last three digits ending in 069.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the first request ending in 069, a second by Commissioner Ebinger, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Madam Chair, I move the same for SP 071.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Payne 071.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
I move SB 076.
Motion to approve SB 076 by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
I'd move SB 070.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell, SB 070, a second by Commissioner Ebinger, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carries.
I'd move SB 075.
Second.
A motion to approve SB 075 by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carries.
Madam Chair, I'd move SB 008.
Second.
Motion to approve SB 008 by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry about the delay. Board, if we can please go back to item number three, which would be the review and approval of committee, 2020 committee appointments. We did allow this for discussion today, certainly as issues arise throughout the year, we can continue to go forward with it, but any follow-up or comments?
My only other, my only other question on this is, on the ones that are down below, are there, maybe more of a question for Steve, are, are there any other things that have come up in the past that we should be considering be added or potentially taken off?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Madam Chair, we've, we did review the section in the bottom, excuse me, and we did not come up with any additional, additional items that, that all commissioners should be attending. I think the remaining items that are on there are still meetings that, as a board, you may regularly attend, and so I would move that these move forward and we can continue to evaluate any other meetings as they come, come up.
Commissioner Campbell, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, I, thank you, I, and then, and then, there were certain, I know we had to do for AMC, and there were certain other ones that were required for us to have resolutions on separately, have we covered all of those?
I believe we have, Mr. Chair, we addressed AMC last week, we also addressed, I think, Commissioner Lakeland, and I think that the library comes up every three years, and this wasn't the third year.
I think I'm in the middle of a term on the Lakeland one, so I don't know if we necessarily addressed it last week, but when issues arise like that, typically the CEO sends information to Steve and then board connect. Kevin?
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussions on this, I know I'd ask to wait till this week for Commissioner Gross and if he's got anything else that.
I'll check the board, I'm okay with him.
Okay, then I, Madam Chair, I would move the 2022 commissioner committee assignments.
We have a motion to approve the committee assignments as presented by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger, are there any further discussions? Any further discussions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries, thank you. And then we'll make sure that the committee portfolios on the commissioner pages online are updated as well, correct?
We will do that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Kirk, thanks for your patience, we'll take your request to purchase roll-off containers and transfer trailers for our new transfer station, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I'm pretty excited today, I saw this on the internet yesterday, and I promised a full head of hair by February, so, looking forward to the results here. Actually, too much sun, so when you're out in the sun, cover up. I'm coming before you today for approval of some equipment for the new transfer station. As with everything else, the prices are going up and there's a real sense of urgency of the timing on this, so this is why I'm coming to you today. Essentially, the two pieces of equipment that I'm coming before you today are roll-off containers, which will be used at the facility, and I'm asking for 10 roll-off containers, and the price for each one of those is $8,150 for a total cost of $81,150. The, the second piece of equipment that I'm asking for are transfer trailers. As we've discussed before, the garbage at the transfer stations are put in the back of essentially semi-trucks and transported either to Perom Resource Recovery Facility or the landfill. Because this is a different type of technology that we're using to fill up the trucks, we need to get new, new transfer trailers, and so that's the reason we're asking for these. We can, we have one transfer trailer right now that we can retrofit, and so we need a total of three, but we need two new ones and then the, the third one we can retrofit, and so that's why the prices are different. The prices for the transfer trailers are $104,323.54, and we can retrofit the one trailer for $10,930.59. One of the things that I, I did do, I tried to find used equipment, there's just no used equipment whatsoever, and honestly, any used equipment that we get, we don't really want, but there's just not any around. The, the other thing to consider today is, is that, as I mentioned, there's a timeliness issue, the transfer trailers, if we order today, they'll be available sometime September, October, so as a result, that'd be a good timing, that's about when we're looking to have our transfer station open. So with that, I stand to answer any questions.
So just a, Kirk, just a clarification on the bid and then on the memo, the price on the bid was $81,500, on the memo, there's a typo of $81,150, just to clarify, you need $81,500 for the 10 roll-offs.
Right, sorry.
That's okay. So.
I do.
Commissioner Campbell.
We have been working on some transportation issues regarding the waste that's sent currently from the Moorhead Transfer Station to Perom. And, you know, just, just a, just a brief summary of what goes on here, we have a contract with Prairie Lake Solid Waste where they bring fines to our facility, our, our landfill, and what's happening is they're bringing those fines there and then they're deadheading back empty, back to Perom. And, and in the, in the meantime, out of Moorhead right now, which, the plan moving forward with the new facility will be that Clay County will take over the transporting of that MSW from Moorhead to Perom, and we'll be deadheading back empty, and it makes no sense. So we've been talking about how we could have the appropriate equipment where, from our new transfer station, we could haul the appropriate containers to the landfill, Perom could take its fines to the landfill, empty them, leave those empty containers, hook on full ones, and take back to Perom. It would save us that trip from Moorhead to Perom, instead it would, instead of a 70-mile trip, it would be a 20-mile trip. And then, and then at the same point in time, then the next time we would go there, we could take full containers there and drop, and take the empty ones back here. So there would only be one time when we'd be, you know, basically dealing with an empty situation, that's going from the landfill back to Moorhead. I, my question is, with what you're proposing here, does that cover the trailers needed to do that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, the, the answer to that would be probably not, and the reason why, we're talking about two different types of containers, the container that they have in Perom are a completely different type of container. These are actually semi-tractor trailers, and so they are different types of trailers, or containers. I think what, you know, and as we've talked about, commissioners, is that we're still in the beginning of coming up with an idea of how we can make this work, and I think that we can make this work, but I, I do think that this number of transfer trailers are appropriate, even if we do, do that. trailers are appropriate, even if we do, do that, that function. So that's kind of what my suggestion or recommendation would be.
So maybe just to clarify for the board, the roll-off containers, like you're talking about, are, are typically what you see at, say, the, the customer drop-off at the landfill, correct?
Madam Chair, that's right.
These aren't trailers that a semi-trailer hooks up to. These are what are on the ground to sort and separate the materials.
That's right, Madam Chair. And, and just to be as clear as possible, I'll probably be clear as mud, but I'll, I'll try and be as clear as possible. The, the, the roll-off containers are, as you mentioned, are similar to the, what we have out at the landfill right now for the customers to drop their material in. So that's one type of roll-off container. The transfer trailers that we're talking about are actually semi-tractor trailers where the garbage is put in and transported either to the Perom or to the landfill. The containers that Commissioner Campbell and I have talked about, and Commissioner Mojo, that go over to Perom, those are completely different. So there's, there's three different types of containers, and what we're talking about today are just the two, the roll-off containers that serve as the transfer station, and they have nothing to do with hauling garbage. They just have to do with dropping material off. So that's one container that we're talking about. And the other container that we're talking about, or the other item we're talking about, are the transfer trailers. The, the third item, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, you go ahead.
The, the third item is basically the item that we're talking about in Perom, and that's a completely different item.
The, if, if I can, so the, and, and I agree that I'm not, I'm not talking about the 10. Those, that's a separate function. I'm talking about the two and the one retrofit for a total of three. All three of those, as we're currently looking at buying them, would they or would they not be compatible with what we're looking at potentially doing in taking from Moorhead to the landfill and then allowing the Perom vehicle to switch and take it back and unload it? The answer is no, isn't it?
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to understand. When we're saying compatible, the answer is no.
Yeah, so, so the, so the point that I'm trying to make here, are we really doing the right thing in buying two brand-new ones for hauling from here to Perom when, I can see us having one of those because they're, because, you know, and this is kind of getting into the-
Weeds.
Into the weeds a little bit here, but, you know, when we're spending 200 and some thousand dollars, I don't want to all of a sudden have this board shocked when we come back and we make a suggestion that we want to buy something else. The, the point being is, is we have it, we can have anywhere from two to three loads a day that go to Perom, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's true.
We can have.
Right.
Typically, two.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's, that's the case right now, and the reason that that's the case now is because of the small, small size of the tipping floor. I would expect with a larger tipping floor, we'll be able to do three on a minimum.
Yes, but, but we also got to remember that, that we don't have an endless amount that we can send to Perom either.
I, I might disagree with you on that.
Yeah, we have eight, we have eight, at the most, right now, 8,400 ton-
Well, yeah, on that, that part-
Based on our contract.
Yeah, we have a contractual obligation, right?
So, and, and again, so I, I, at 100 and, close to 105 grand apiece, and to have three of them when I think it's, you know, maybe one of those is the appropriate one, and, and then looking at the two new ones or three new ones, that would be different, a different loading style that can be used. We're talking, hopefully, a year from now.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner, you know, again, from my perspective, I mean, I think that the county would be well-served by three, three transfer trailers.
Well-
Two, two new ones and then one retrofit. I, I think that the county would be well-served by that. The, the containers that you're talking about as far as Perom, I'm not sure that that should be on Clay County's dime. I think that should be on the-
We're the, we're the ones who are going to be saving entirely on it.
I think that Perom would be as well-served as, as Clay County, and that's just, that's just my opinion.
The expenses to Perom will not change.
Well, I think the expenses to Perom will change somewhat because the, the, the backhauling will be shared by Clay County in that point of view. So I think that the, the cost would go down for, for-
So, and again, currently, Perom drives to the landfill and they drive back.
Yep.
Under this new scenario, they're going to drive to the landfill and they're going to drive back. It's going to be the same miles for them, there and back.
That's true, except we're going to be paying, we're going to be paying for part of that because we're going to be paying for part of the-
We're paying it now.
If I might, thank you. Thank you for presenting us with an option to retrofit one of the trailers. I think that it's important to, because there's such a, such a substantial cost to have these walking floor trailers, I think it's, it's important that we're not buying, talking about three brand-new ones. You know, I, I think that Commissioner Campbell does bring up some very valid points in terms of what does the future look like in, in terms of truckloads, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're not deadheading anywhere. I think that if we were to approve this today based on the recommendation for the three with the, the two new and one retrofit, once we get the transfer station up and running, if we find that this is something that, there's a trailer setting that, that is an investment that we put in and we're not using it, I think that there, the market shows that there's substantial value for resale on that. You know, and, and I, I think there, there does need to be further discussions, as Commissioner Campbell brought up. I had received the, the proposals through inter, through email about a week ago, and I didn't have any concerns on them, but I'm certainly open for board discussion if board has more concerns or comments.
I should point out, Madam Chair, that, I mean, if, if it does get to the point where, where there is, it's going to be not used, which I, I don't think, I think we're going to be using all three, or you'll be using all three. But if there is a point where that, that occurs, I mean, the, as, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, the resale value is, I mean, it's, it's not going to be an issue.
So before us, there's two proposals. Board wishes.
I'd like them separate, please. I'd, I'd move the approval of the 10-
There's-
Roll-off containers.
A motion to approve the first request of the 10 roll-off trailers in the amount of $81,500. And a second, the motion was Campbell, second was Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. There's a second proposal that's been presented.
Madam Chair, I, I would, I would move the purchase of one new trailer and the retrofit.
There's a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the one trailer and the second, or one new trailer and the second would be to retrofit. I don't, that would be, I don't have the amount here.
Would be 104,323.54 for the-
Okay.
New one, and then 10,930.59 for the retrofit.
I will second that. There is a motion by Commissioner Campbell to purchase the one new one, and then retrofit the second, a second by Commissioner Kaylee.
And Madam Chair, if I can, just-
Yep, Commissioner Campbell.
You know, the reason I did that is, is it'll certainly provide us what we need as we enter into the opening of that facility. That would give us two trailers that could be moving back and forth to Perom or to the landfill. And it would allow us the time to review the compactor issue. I, I just don't see the need for three trailers if we're going to go to this other-
Madam Chair, let me, let me, you know, and I haven't been, I've only been doing this for 40 years, so I don't know too much about anything. But I think that one of the things that you need to consider is you need to have one available to load while the other two are potentially on the road. And that's the other reason why you want to have a third trailer.
We've only always had one on the road at a time.
Okay. Commissioner, I, I'm going to not support the motion. I really struggle, having been through several different build projects, making sure that we are not only building projects to, for future growth, but to address any needs that may arise. And I, I, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that retrofitting an ancient trailer is going to be a safe backup plan. We have had our sheriff come forward and purchase vehicles, you know, up to 10 months ahead of schedule for what they believe delivery would be, and, and there are substantial supply chain issues in terms of what we're able to get and when we're able to get it. I think that certainly we are interested in saving money however we can, and I appreciate that, and I think that's why you came forward with the request to retrofit. But having less than the total amount of what we need at a new facility seems in poor taste from my perspective, so I won't support the motion. Any other board discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. You have what you want. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions at all? Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our item number eight. Oh, sorry, James, you're five. I know you like hanging out with us, but maybe not for that long. James has a request before us to fill a vacancy for a juvenile worker in the secure unit. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I'm here today to request a fill of a vacancy that we have in our secure unit for a juvenile worker position. It's a line 13 position. There, there'll be slight savings between the new hire, and I would request permission to backfill as well.
Move to approve.
With backfill, Commissioner Gross?
With backfill.
Okay, a motion to approve the request with backfill by Commissioner Gross, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, this board, I believe on December 22nd, heard the open hearing for Mortenson's request for rezoning in Goose Prairie Township. That request was tabled to this meeting. In looking forward to this meeting, making sure that all commissioners had an opportunity to address the concerns brought forward, the application brought forward, we did communicate with staff, both legal, planning department, but also the applicant, and did not think that we would be hearing this because of some scheduling issues. So it is tabled in the minutes to today. I would ask this board for a continuation of the tabling until next week to allow the applicant to participate.
I move we table it for an additional week.
Okay, Commissioner Ebinger makes a motion to continue the tabling until next week. Brian, does that suffice with legal? Thank you. We do have a motion. Second. And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries, thank you. Kurt Cannon, good morning. Before us, you do have two requests, I see.
Yes. It's good to be here.
Good to see you.
I hardly come here, but-
Would you like to come more?
No. Tried to get it all done at one time for the whole year.
Okay, your first would be to approve moving the administration, administrative assistant position from halftime to one FTE, correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair. That sounds good, doesn't it, Madam Chair?
Always.
I had to ask what I was doing here.
Well, certainly, from someone that's been on this board for a while, the workload that your department sees in such a tiny paid staff, you do so much, and I know that Jennifer gets a lot of credit for that, but Bonnie's fantastic as well, and, and so I think the needs in the community warrant your request. I was not on pick, so I'm not sure if this had been to pick or not.
Yes.
It has. It was just, we're down 17, start of the year, 2020 to nine, I think, just the pandemic and some age stuff. So, and future needs for our office, instead of, justify another Kurt or Jennifer, so increasing a skilled person out front would maximize our potential.
Okay, Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I just want to indicate, personal experience, Veterans Administration has great benefits for our veterans that earned them, but there is a pretty Byzantine bureaucratic process you've got to go through to deal with it. And Kurt helped my family, pointed this in the right direction, helped us with my father-in-law. And we got the benefits he earned in World War II, and it was very gratifying to see that. And I know it wasn't just for my family, but this is, this is a process that a lot of people are encumbered with, and if they're having problems with it, come in and see our veteran administrator, and you're going to get some good service. And we need to support that with this staffing request.
So is that a motion?
Yes, sir, go dogs.
And I make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, a second by Commissioner Kaylee to fulfill the request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Madam Chair, that's a start date of January 31. I'm going to hold off.
Yes, that, I think because that is advertised in the memo that way, I believe that reflects the understanding of what this board was as well.
Perfect.
Great. Item two is your out-of-state travel training. Texas in June, have fun.
Going back home, San Antonio. Yes, if it's still on. They're not opening hotels yet, but they have a date. So it could be still canceled.
I move approval of the out-of-state travel.
Motion to approve the travel request by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Here's the word, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt, for what you do.
Go Hogs, right?
Okay, so our committee reports for last week. Commissioner Kaylee.
She's not come with me two weeks in a row. Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week on Tuesday, the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Leadership Group met to plan for our upcoming meeting later this week, or later this month. And then on Thursday, I attended the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We talked a lot in that meeting about the annual survey that goes out to providers of mental health services for youth as well as to families of youth receiving mental health services. We talked about some strategies for getting a higher rate of return on those surveys, and any tweaks that we might want to make to the survey that we have used in the past. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, in 10-1 meeting yesterday morning, the MRC, in the meeting, Margaret from Transportation spoke on their issues. Thinking about the bonding bill this year is going to go over a billion dollars, so I don't see that very often. Other thing she talked about, changes in auto parts tax. I don't know if you remember back in 2017, they changed it that we get so much of an amount for highway stuff, but now they're looking at changing it again because the present system doesn't allow it to expand at all. And then she went over the 16 items of priority that they're going to be talking about this year at the legislature. And then the big problem that they're running into is these plans that you, you come up with a plan and they have to be matching funds, and these small counties- And these small counties just miss out on that completely because they can't get the matching funds, so that's why they don't get to take advantage of those taxes as much. And that was the only one I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
On January 4th, I had a meeting regarding, just a meeting regarding dispatch, looking at some, a potential language and a potential new joint powers authority. So we continued to, we had a, we had a meeting with Minnesota members to start that process going through and reviewing that. And we're having another meeting this week, I believe it is. And then that same day, I also had a, an executive meeting with the, for the diversion authority. And we discussed several things. There was some discussion about potentially eliminating what is currently known as the Outreach Committee, phasing that out and potentially changing that to a possible planning committee. It's, that's in its early discussion stages. And then also, we are working on a new total governance policy that would deal with how we, how we interact with the diversion authority director and how that process will look moving forward now that we're more into the construction phase. And then Joel Paulson gave a little report on, on hiring of a finance director, and nothing has been done yet. And they're actually considering not even having that position. Thinking that what we currently have, if your other local government entities might be able to work with that. They are looking at the need for potentially two new engineers, one who would work directly with the Corps of Engineers on those projects, and one to work with the P3 contractor. And again, those are, right now, they're just topics that are being discussed to move forward. Yesterday afternoon, I attended the owners' construction meeting for the Resource Recovery Facility. An update, there's, they're looking at having 16 trailer loads of material for the metal building coming in here this month. And that's over a half a million pounds worth of metal. It's going to be stockpiled on site. The other thing that we talked about considerably was the, like we did this morning on a generator issue, but this one, the biggest issue is going to be determining whether it's going to be natural gas or diesel. The price between those two might indicate which one to go with. Joe will be studying that more. And they continue to work on footings and that type of thing. So it's, even though the weather's been cold, it's moving along quite nicely. They're going to have some additional help there this week because the weather is improving. So they're going to try to make up some ground this week. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Yesterday, I also attended the MRC Committee that Commissioner Gross updated us on. There are substantial travel needs among the state. And so it was good to have discussion about what those infrastructure needs are statewide and how we continue to, we can continue to lobby for what those needs are. Just an item of note, January 9th was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And unfortunately, I forgot to get this on the agenda, so I apologize for that. But there are so many individuals in Clay County, our sheriff's office, but also all of the local departments that dutifully serve the citizens of Clay County. And I just want to extend my gratitude to those individuals for their service. That's something that, over the years, the Joint Powers has done, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day things. But just because we didn't have it officially on the agenda doesn't mean that we don't appreciate the selfless work that continues on a daily basis. Item also, the financial disclosure for public employee or elected officials is due before the end of the month. So make sure that you provide your input to that. And then also, looking forward on the upcoming agenda, we do have our intergovernmental retreat coming up at the end of the month. Steve? Oh, Commissioner Ebbinger, I apologize. Did you have your hand up? I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I'm happy to be bringing up the rear here. Last Tuesday, I attended the Dispatch Center meeting reviewing the joint powers, draft joint powers agreement that Commissioner Campbell mentioned. We're going to have to do a lot of work on that, but it's a good start. Then on the 6th, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee Lunch and Learn. Paul Barthol covered the Diversion Authority's joint powers agreement that was signed in 2016. And that was useful. Half the board that's on there now is post signing that, not, not as familiar with it as we should be. February, there's going to be another training on flow easements and then risk register in March. So they're going to continue this training. It's a, it's a really useful thing, I think, it's bringing a lot of us up to speed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the Triple RDC meeting that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebbinger have both addressed. Spent a lot of time last week along with HR and, and public health and working on vaccine testing mandates. We had, on Tuesday afternoon, the closing, the final closing for the DMV location on 50th Avenue North. All our property, or most of our property has been moved. And just to note that the hazardous waste will continue to be in its, its current location until the Resource Recovery Facility is completed. On the 5th, I met with Rory Schmitz, our IT Director, and just discussing New World Systems that we partner with our local, local cities in the Dispatch Center. Clay County offers, is, offers the support to those rural cities and also acts as a passer to Fargo IT. On the, we had some discussions on the 5th. We've been contacted by multiple bargaining units in regards to the upcoming ETS policy. And so I had some meetings with Darren Brooke and Anna Moore on that issue. On the 5th, I also spoke with County Administrator Hanson out of Ottertail County in regards to some of our ETS planning, both here in, in Clay County and Ottertail County. That afternoon, I met with Mr. Melton on, on planning with the ETS and also met with Kimberly Savageo on ongoing activities in Recorder's Office. On the 7th, we had bargaining unit discussion with one of our, our local units. Again, a good discussion there, really more informational than anything at this point, but we will follow, follow the grievance procedure as laid out for us. Darren and I participated in the ETS planning Minnesota OSHA webinar on Friday afternoon, or Friday morning, excuse me, and found out some information from planning purposes there. On the 10th, just a note that last Friday, the ARPA, ARPA did come out with its final rule. We've been operating under an interim rule since the information first came out. Again, we're, we have a broader scope. The initial, the initial rule is about 150 pages. The, the final rule is 438 pages, I believe. So we're weeding, weeding through that. I met yesterday afternoon with Matt Jacobson in regards to the comprehensive plan and the plan to bring that before this board. And also looking at having one more final community engagement opportunity. So that will be coming out. I spoke yesterday afternoon with Dan Molly on a series of different shared issues between the county and the city. I would note, just in follow-up to Darren's comments earlier in regards to vaccination status, Kathy and her staff have finalized a proposed testing piece. Darren is in the process of finalizing the HR component of that. Will be bringing that and combining them this week with the intent to bring that before the pick here within the next few days and to get that before the boards, before the board for their discussion. Again, just of note, last Friday, the vaccination or ETS standard was argued before the Supreme Court. And so we're currently waiting on any word from the Supreme Court, but as of this morning, there's been no final comment on that. So I'm, just of note, you guys all would have received an email during board. There's a drug court graduation tomorrow that will be held by Zoom if you're interested. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Apparently, I forget Commissioner Ebbinger and also forget my own meetings. So last week, I also did attend the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did have some discussion on the disability insurance proposals for staff. I think there's some follow-up discussion that will happen. And we did take action on the 2022 contract amendment with balanced tax and accounting and took action on Amendment 4 of the 2021, 22 UPWP. Anything else? Commissioner Campbell?
My question for Darren, are we, are we any closer to establishing a pick meeting to review this OSHA policy?
I'm pretty much finished with the policy yesterday, so I need to set up a pick time to do that. And I, I have Anna just reviewing it right now. And then I'm going to send it out to the pick for review. And then hopefully, we can have a, a meeting shortly to go through that and see if it's going to meet the, meet the bill.
Brian, do you have anything? Colleen? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.